I'd like to open the planning board meeting for March 31st. It's now 7:45. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is video and audiotaped. So, the first on the agenda, it is 7:45, isn't it? The Island Lighting and Power Systems, Inc., from Shire Drive.
Steve, should we put a request in for the open meeting continuance for Toils?
Oh, that's true, yeah. Let's continue the first hearing before we go on to the second one. So, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Toils and Farm Fox Run subdivision hearing to April 14th, 2015, at 7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, by the lighting. Good evening. Rick Goodrow with United Consultants. Here this evening are Jared O'Neil and Jim O'Neil, the owners of the proposed project property. Mr. Chairman, I do have some 11-by-17s of the revised plans if the board members would like them.
Sure.
Thanks.
Basically, to bring the board up to speed, since the last hearing, we've had hearings with both the zoning board of appeals for three special permits. That hearing has been closed, deliberated, and we're awaiting the decision for that. We have also met with the design review board. One of their members, Mr. Nicodemos, is here this evening.
What were the three things we went in front of zoning board for?
You'd have to ask me, huh? Front yard parking. We went for three special permits. Front yard parking. We had contractors' headquarters in the off-highway area and storage of more than three commercial vehicles outside. We don't plan on storing the commercial vehicles outside. That's why there are so many garage bays, but things do happen where they're, you know, able to store a vehicle outside. They wanted that flexibility. So, those were the three special permits.
Were they granted?
They deliberated to grant. We don't have a decision yet, but it certainly was a positive discussion from the zoning board. We've also addressed the comments from the various town consultants, town departments, and revisions have been made. We have received two additional sets of review comments, one from the design review board and one from the town's review consultant, Weston and Sampson. The Weston and Sampson letter has basically one concern with respect to this manhole here, which we certainly can address. We've contacted Situate Ray Precast to just clarify the exact dimensions that they would cut the hole or cored the hole in the manhole. There seems to be a concern with the size of the hole being cored to accept a concrete pipe, which has a thicker wall and is generally a thicker hole or a larger hole than a plastic ADS pipe, which has a smaller wall thickness, so we could gain a couple more inches.
Well, so those comments that we had about the holes not lining up or not fitting properly, that was because they were calculating on a concrete pipe?
I believe so. I'd like to talk with them. We have the ability to raise this whole run up another six inches if we need to. You know, we have the ability to flatten this run out, which is what they suggested, to basically create some more space between the two pipes. So, you know, there's rarely no issue in making a small adjustment to rectify that. Once we get the comments back from Situate Ray Precast, we will then like to have a discussion with Weston and Sampson, and whatever the final outcome is, we'll address it. So, there are rarely three ways we can address it. We can leave it as is, if they're comfortable with that, or we can change either of the two pipe runs to create more space between the two. Additionally, the pipes are coming in at an angle to each other, as you can see, one running in here, one running in here. So, the holes, as you're trying to visualize a hole coming in, they're not on top of each other. They're coming in a little bit offset. So, you get that extra space between them as well. So, you know, we've calculated to be over four inches with the foot and a half opening. We could get over six inches with what we believe would be adequate to allow the plastic pipe connection. So, that really was their, seemed to be their big issue. Certainly, we can go through their letter if you'd like, but that seemed to be their major issue. We have, I believe, addressed most of their other comments. With respect to the design review and based on the last hearing, we have proposed to plant 14 of the street trees that are proposed as part of the development, to get that kicked off and started as part of this proposal. And we did that in some areas where there was concern about some light spillage, particularly near the intersection of Sharon Ave. and Shire Drive. There are lights proposed as part of the subdivision. However, where exactly they are, it's not clear. The road profile of the approved subdivision set does show site lighting to be done at the town and Norfolk's discretion. So, it appears that street lighting will be part of the, you know, the final package. Exactly where, I'm not sure. I would imagine the intersection will be illuminated. That would certainly make sense. But we, the applicant and the owner wanted to install some of these trees to start setting up, you know, a finished product of the industrial park. Also, we've left the chain link fence with the privacy slats. We've gone through this with the design review. We've basically added some shrubbery along the fence here. I believe 15 shrubs are proposed from basically this corner along the sidewalk and the Sharon Ave. side. We've added five trees here to basically help buffer that. And we've also, at the DRB's suggestion, proposed trumpet vines to be planted at the base of the fence that will climb up the fence, pretty fast, excuse me, fast-growing aggressive vine. That'll help, you know, provide some screening from the fence. So, that's basically, you know, the changes that we've made to the plan was addressing most of the comments that were brought to us before. Happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask Bob if there's any other items that you want to bring up.
Couple of minor issues. The documents that we had...
I need a microphone, sorry.
The documents that we had did not have a roof plan, so we think that should be part of the final package when it's submitted. And we did have, in that regard, a little bit of critique on the placement of the eight-foot-high rooftop unit, which we asked to be relocated slightly back towards the Shire Drive side of the building and to clad it with the tundra roof panel so that it's dark instead of white, because we think it will be slightly more visible. And therefore, we would like to see it in a darker color than a lighter color. And that was basically the summary of our comments from what we got and reviewed on last night.
Do you have any objections to those? No.
Before you give it back to him, Bob, I see in the letter here, there was discussion of a proposed six-foot-high solid fence in certain areas. Is that still your proposal?
We understood that the fence was six-foot high.
Yeah.
And that we were not opposed to that as long as we got the screening that we suggested.
That he suggested.
Yes.
Fair enough. Thank you.
They suggested we add it, which are these 15 shrubs and the climbing vines and the five trees down here.
Steve? Yep. Go right ahead.
Where did we end up with the structure with the roof for equipment storage?
These two structures here?
Yeah. We had some conversations about siding on there and what that might look like.
Well, what we hoped was with the fence, the chain link fence and the additional plantings and screenings, that it wouldn't be necessary to provide the siding on the building there or the structure there, if you will, because of its elevation being depressed and then the additional shrubs and plantings. The applicant would prefer to leave that open.
How high is that structure?
Do you know off the top of your head?
So, I mean, just something for the board maybe to consider, whether even a partial type of screening for the upper portion of it. But, you know, I can certainly table that for further discussion here by the members. But the other thing is the lighting. I see the request for the waiver for the height restriction of the 15 feet. So, I don't see, as part of that request for the waiver, a specific height. So, where are we in terms of the height? I just want to make sure we understand how high those are going to be ultimately.
Yeah, I believe it's a 17 and 19-foot pole heights. As you can see...
Is that in this plan set, Rick?
Yeah, it should be the last sheet of the plan set, but it's going to be difficult for you to read. I believe there's 17 and 19 feet on some of the poles. As you can see...
Is that in this plan set, Rick?
Yeah, it should be the last sheet of the plan set, but it's going to be difficult for you to read. I believe there's 17 and 19 feet on some of the poles. 17 feet. I apologize. 20 feet, 17 feet. The wall packs are at 10. And the arc lighting is approximately 20.
And you're, it's a good elevation up off the road, too. When you, what is, if it's a 10-foot-high light, can you give me a sense of the road, how high up off the road that is?
Well, it varies, you know, from a height point here. The road is approximately five feet higher than the parking lot here. So, the road's higher here. The road then begins to drop. It's approximately three feet higher from this contour to the finished elevation of this slab under this...
Three feet higher?
The road is three feet higher than that.
Is it this side that's low?
Correct. Now, once you come down into this area here, this intersection is about a foot to two feet maybe lower than this section of the parking lot. As you get down here, obviously, this is the steepest part. The road's at elevation 245 here and 254, 255 here. But, you know, we have proposed to leave all the existing vegetation in here to help screen that. Proposed planting some of the street trees, you know, to help screening that as well. As I mentioned earlier, there are streetlights proposed for this development. They're not shown on the plan view, but they are shown in the cross-section to be completed at the town's discretion.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to put it on the table. I'm not familiar enough with it to know whether 20 feet would be an issue. I assume the varying heights have to do with the contour as you were describing it, so you would have taller poles where you have a higher, a greater differential between the road and the property. Is that...
Really, what the higher pole is, is to get the spread further towards the building. You know, these poles here, we have a larger parking lot, so they're not located in the middle of the building. Their owner is coming off of the wall packs, if you will. They're able to put the higher poles along here, shine them in towards the site. They certainly can be backshielded, so you're not really seeing them from the street, if you will, the light spread can be limited to the, you know, back of the parking lot. So, if you, you know, if you look at the photometric plan, which I'm sure on yours, the scale is challenging to read, but, you know, we're at zeros in through here, 0.1 foot candles. I mean, the sidewalk isn't even being touched by any light from these high poles. There's PO and poles, which are the 20-foot-high poles.
Do you have something to add on this, Bob?
Only that, at our meeting, we understood that the lighting would not be on air for 7:45.
Correct. Security lighting, there'll be some security lighting, but this will not be lit 24 hours a day.
That addresses my concern. I'm more concerned about the residents in the area on Sharon.
Security, is it the wall packs or is it also some select pole lights as well?
Just the wall packs is what you were proposing. Doors. Yeah, the wall packs over the doors, basically, yeah.
But not in the lot itself?
Occasionally, there may be situation where there's an emergency based on their type of business, but, you know, once, twice a year. I mean, normal operating procedure will be, this place will be basically down to security lighting at 7 o'clock at night.
All right.
I must have been confusing with a different project. I thought you had later hours, remembering chips.
I'm a little confused about the 14 street trees, because I keep seeing there's 14 street trees, but when I look at the symbol for the deciduous tree, there's lots, more than 14. So, can you help me understand?
Part of a subdivision didn't get put in.
No, but they're shown on this. So, what are you putting in versus what aren't you putting in?
Basically, the ones that have a label. You know, PO and LM here. These two, we're not proposing to plant.
So, PO is going in?
Correct. Pin oak, pin oak sugar maple, another pin oak, another sugar maple. We basically tried to anchor the entrance here, anchor the entrance here, anchor the entrance here.
Anything with a label.
So, you can see some of the trees are labeled. We'd be put, the, I'm certainly not putting them in. The owners would be proposing to put in. I mean, they want to start setting up the park so it actually starts to look finished, you know, and help with that. So, they wanted to install some of the tree plantings that were proposed as part of the development, you know, in the...
Did the design review board note the specific locations of the 14? Did you understand that?
We did not, no. We saw what they had. We didn't have an objection with it, but we didn't specifically note it.
Once I find all the 14, I might have a comment on it, but I'm still hunting and pecking for them, so.
I'd like to see the larger one.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I got 10. It's like, it's like the find the hidden object game.
There's a lot on the page.
Seven, eight, nine.
It's kind of misleading to have them in here when they're not going in, you know?
12, 13, 14. Well, they should be going in as part of the subdivision.
Did you watch him do that?
What?
Did you watch him? He just walked around the site and counted them.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go again, please.
We have one here, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
A little less than half of what the plan ultimately would be, right?
Talking with the landscape people, they were concerned with some of the spacing on some of the trees. You know, these trees that are proposed can get a spread of, you know, 60 to 80 feet at full maturity, and you're looking at about 35, 30, 35 feet on center for the planting. So, that was part of their discussion. Obviously, if the town comes in and completes the roadwork and wants to install the remainder of the trees, they can certainly do that.
Andrew, do you have any other questions? Michelle?
You know, I just come back to whether there should be a skirt of some kind, you know, shielding the upper portion of the side of that structure. I don't know that I feel that strongly about it, but...
Do you have any elevations on that or a detail or anything that, did you see one, Bob? No?
It says that the slab is at 260, right?
Correct.
And the street is at 263 right there.
Correct.
Sharon Ave. side is 265.
Yeah, at the high point. Correct. 265 here, drops down to a 263 here.
That's what I was, right at the... If you're standing in the street looking in...
So, the 14 or 15 high-foot structure, you're going to see up into the...
You're going to see the top eight foot or so, because you're just going to see the...
See above the six-foot fence.
Above the six-foot fence, right?
So, what size vehicles may potentially be parked in here? How, what kind of vehicle might be in here?
Jared?
I would say most likely just covered storage for trailers, mostly. I mean, that's the stuff that's not going to be inside will be trailers that would get pulled with like a pintle hook or a, you know, one of our bigger trucks. So, we don't, we purposely put everything of value of size inside for protection from the elements and stuff. So, we really don't see a need for anything out there that would be that high, but, you know, if we wanted to protect one of the bigger trucks from the snow while something was blocking the spot where it normally parks, they could fit under there. Or if someone backs it in, they're not going to hit a 10-foot-high structure, because our biggest truck is 13'9". So, that's why we made them that height. But on a regular basis, you won't have eight trucks backed into, you know, at 14 feet. So, I mean...
Design review board, that's probably the most sensitive corner as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's why we looked at that relative to the screen planting they had.
Right. Did you think at all about raising the fence height in just that corner?
We were inspired by the adding of vegetation that would grow to screen that rather than the fence, and we felt that they were moving in that direction with the conifers that they proposed in that location.
Yeah. I guess I wonder with a little bit higher fence, just for even a short run, with the climbing vines, that might do the trick. I don't know what you would propose to push it up to. I guess that's what I struggle with a little bit, but it might, it might just be enough to take the bite off that edge a little more.
Why don't you go over 6 feet and be a special permit?
Oh, yeah.
The, I believe, right across the street there is what we hope to be our new police station, right? And so, it's a little bit, a little bit further down. But, you know, so I'm just thinking in terms of the amount of vehicles and such that are visiting police station for various reasons, just trying to improve the aesthetics of that as much as possible. So, you know, is a skirt, is that something that would be considered prohibitive to put up a six-foot skirt or something, just so that you're not looking at that entire open side of the...
Of course, when I hear skirt, I think from the waist down, but you mean from the top down?
From the top down, yeah.
I think tube top instead.
I don't think, you know...
Thank you.
I don't think we're opposed to that. I just, my only question would be honestly, what would be worse, seeing what looks like half of a building or just, you know, a cleaner I-beam-type structure where, you know, the roof sits on top of it? Now, it looks more architectural than, you know, trying to come up with a siding that, you know, comes up above that black fence. You know, I don't think, you know, we're opposed, it's only going to protect what's in there from the elements more, but I think we just try to be simplistic with it, only because its function was just to kind of protect it from the elements somewhat, but...
That's why I was asking the height of the vehicles, because if you, by looking up, if you're just going to see clear through and not obstructed by a lot of vehicles, that might be cleaner, just to leave it open. But if there's a lot of stuff going on in there, then it might be nicer to...
I mean, the only trucks we own that are over 13 feet are exactly why we have so many bays. So, I would just, I don't honestly see a situation where we've got stuff filling that bay, just realistically, so...
It's more like a temporary storage, just in case you get overloads.
Yeah, yeah.
Good timing.
I mean, if after the project is complete, and let's say there was some interest on behalf of the town to perhaps improve that with a skirt, something like that, you'd be receptive to doing. I wouldn't think it'd be a tremendous cost just to put...
Exactly. I don't, I'm not even looking at that perspective either, just aesthetically, how do we make it look, you know, as clean as piece of steel? So, yeah.
That's good enough for me, absolutely.
That's good enough for me.
Yeah.
Is it a shed roof? Is that, is it just a simple shed roof?
Yeah.
Are you all done, Michelle?
I'm set, because the last discussion covered my points, so...
John?
The manhole, what's the space between the top of the manhole and the pipes that are going into that, Rick? Is there enough for structure?
From the top of the manhole to the top of the pipe?
You're suggesting lowering that manhole? Or did our engineers mention that?
Right.
Is there a real need, the way those pipes are going in there?
I don't believe so.
I don't either. That's what my question was.
Well, we're going to talk with Situate Ray, who will ultimately construct the manhole and then, you know, work that out with them. And if Weston and Sampson's happy with the results, then fine. If not, what we can basically do is change the height of the pipe running in, right now. Right now, the pipe running from helical separator nine into drain manhole J is 18 inches higher than the pipe running in from drain manhole K to drain manhole J. We could take that whole pipe at the same slope and pick it up six more inches and make it two feet from end right to end.
My only point is, there's no need to go change all the grading just for something like that.
No, no, no. This would be simply changing two numbers.
Okay. It's fine.
You know, they, Weston and Sampson, Weston and Sampson actually went through and provided all the calculations for what would happen if the pipe slope was changed to 2% velocity full, the capacity full, if you will, what the pipe could handle. That's another alternative as well. You know? So, it's basically separating those two pipes. Thank you.
Gino, did you notice anything in this conversation?
Nope. My comments had been addressed, so...
Ray, have you got anything to add?
No, I don't. I think it's a good plan.
So, what was it that you wanted to hold off to take a look at, Jeff? That there was something that you said you wanted to, it had to do with the skirt or something for the...
I'm okay. I think, you know, just as a sign of goodwill here, that if there was to be an interest, because once that police station is in place, you know, they're doing things with the dispatch as well. I'm not sure if that's going to be on the second floor, and so if there's something that could be improved on without a significant amount of money to be spent, I would, I would think that you'd be interested in doing it, and you basically have said, have said so much, so...
In addition, our, you know, just in general, our lots next door are directly abutting what will be our headquarters as well. So, we have that same vested interest in making sure that, you know, whatever we choose to develop in that spot is clean and looks, you know, as great, as aesthetic as possible, so...
Oh, yeah. Bob Bullock had a comment that had to do with combining the lots. When is this going to, when are the lots going to be combined?
We'd certainly be happy to do that as a condition of the approval of a site plan.
All right. Does anyone have any reason to not close this hearing?
No.
Okay. Oh, yes, Bob.
We felt, the town review board felt that closing the hearing should be conditional on the fact that we at least do not have a roof plan of this document package.
Yep.
And that should be part of the included...
We'll hold it to take that information.
Thank you.
Is the roof plan for these little side structures as well?
I think there's an HVAC unit that they're looking at the position of it and...
It doesn't address your issue. You wouldn't get an elevation to see what your perspective would look like.
Right, right. But I think it could be managed even post-construction if it could be improved on. I think that's good enough for me.
So, does somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to close the hearing for Island Lighting and Power Systems for 14 Shire Drive.
With the condition of being able to...
Approving the coverage for the roof HVAC equipment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Oh, I forgot to ask where you're storing the snow.
Thank you for donating the street trees to help us on our way to set this road.
Don't mention snow.
No, I looked at, there's plenty of room for snow on here. I just thought I'd say that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck.
So, my way in here, I heard an advertisement for Scott's Seed from Home Depot.
Oh, yeah.
It's never too early.
That's a bit out, right?
I know. I know. It's like, don't you guys...
Wish for thinking. You have to will in sometimes.
We're usually planting it around now.
I know, but have they heard?
All right. What do we have here?
Thank you.
If you can get every applicant to put in so many street trees, then the town will be all good.
Gold Street subdivision, what...
Pre-submission, so...
What discussion are we having on the Gold Street?
Same with it, Ray and I have had twice with Mr. Stavala.
I've had it a couple more times than you.
Okay. Maybe we can take a break while they're talking.
Is Gold Street where the well is?
There's, um...
That's the street. Conover, Merrell, and Gold.
Oh.
Steve?
Yes.
Design Reviews, I'm not here when Design Review is here very often.
Right.
And I'm wondering if there'd be an opportunity to have a conversation with them about the little street gazebo sign enclosure that's full of snow at the moment, but has never been fully completed. And...
At the bus stop.
Right, it's between us and Walgreens. It's between...
Call it the bus stop.
The bus stop.
The info kiosk.
The info kiosk. And it's, as I recall, it's been a... And I don't mean to have this conversation now, but there's Bob. But as I recall, the issue got stuck at Design Review.
Well, it's not Design Review.
I know, because it looks pretty nice to me.
It's the type of display for the information part, for the signage. That's where we're stuck. And I had thought that we had asked the Board of Selectmen, actually, what type they want, whether they want something that people can go up and stick pins in on corkboard, or is it a locked cabinet? Remember that these discussions?
Sliding, sliding, light sliding letters. Who was going to, A, decide what was going to be in there, and B, how it would be maintained?
Yeah, yeah.
Which I thought never...
But it would go out of our... It would go out of our hands, so we have to have an administrator and somebody who... If somebody else is gonna administer it, they should be the ones that choose the type of display that it is, right? Do you remember this?
We had talked about the message board in Franklin over at 140, and the intersection over at the...
Walgreens.
There's a Walgreens there, yeah, as an example, perhaps, and then I think we talked about whether or not there's enough visibility there at that intersection. I mean, it's gonna be getting more. I mean, we have a coffee shop which is gonna be going in soon, and so it's gonna be maybe seeing more activity over there. I recall that aspect of it.
It wasn't really... It was never designed to be a rectangle, you know, it was never designed to be long and thin.
Right.
But we can deal with it, the way it is.
Okay, so it's not Design Review, it's not Planning Board, and it's not getting done.
Right, well, well, it still is in our hands, but we wanted to find out for the people that are going to be responsible, ultimately, that we get something that they would prefer.
Right.
As opposed to us choosing whatever it is and saying, "Here you go."
Right. Ken Frodo was part of that conversation, too.
Is that what you recall, Bob?
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, she was...
Is that what you recall on the... You know? Oh, you just don't recall. You recall something different.
I think it might have been right in between before you came on.
Might have been. I know there was a discussion, but I don't know what the details are.
So we should start over and...
Okay, so I don't have to blame you anymore.
So we should start over and come up with a few ideas to give people a choice of.
Well, and the manager, as you... The manager is only one of a few people, and so that's a pretty key... It's a pretty key piece of information.
Yeah.
So, we could probably find out from our planner.
This does sound like an in-house issue.
Yeah, yeah, so, just wondering if you could come up with a few ideas for us to choose from, you know, whether a locked case...
Or even find out administratively what the thought is behind who would manage the program.
Well, it should be available to pretty much anyone that wants to put something there, right?
Be careful, be careful.
But...
Yeah, be careful.
Right now, it's a really, it's a really nice little seating wall and this gazebo thing, and it just doesn't seem to... You don't know what to... You don't know what to do with it, right?
Is it marketing? Is it advertising? Is it...
So it just needs to be finished.
Is it information to account events? I mean, that needs some...
Because you must be familiar with these types of cases and everything that they have for outdoors.
At one point, when it was first designed, at one point, there were gonna be panels. Do you remember that, Gina? There are gonna be panels inside the corners that faced out. So if there were three sides that you could see, there would be three sides, and then, of course, somebody brought up the bright idea of, well, then, if there was one side left open, then, you know, what are the kids gonna do inside?
I think you guys have nailed it on the head, though, is the management of it really drives what you end up putting there, and how it gets managed is the big issue, so... I'll do some research. I'll get back to you.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
So maybe that can go on the next agenda. Sorry for dropping it in.
So Bob, there was one good idea. Got another one?
Oh, yeah, a few unfinished ones.
That was one of the first things I gave him when he came here, my folder.
Yes, and I did the same thing to Dave Lapointe when he became chairman, so...
This is real.
In Franklin, it's the building department that actually manages the, you know, the boards in Franklin. So people have to sign up, you know, and...
It could be historical in nature. There might be historical information. I mean, it could take all sorts of different angles, I don't know.
All right.
Different ideas. We just gotta figure out what we like.
Yep.
Thank you for indulging me.
Now, were we planning on having a Sandy Knoll Estates earth removal discussion? What's that?
Myrtle, is he, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, I just didn't remember scheduling that. Okay, Myrtle, Gold Street subdivision? Yes, you have a pre-submission discussion for... You wanna have with us? All right, so if you can identify yourself for us, you have to use a microphone.
Okay, we gotta use the microphone. Not for us, but for the people at home. I'm not used to this microphone stuff. Make sure it...
Goes green.
It won't amplify it. Just record everything.
I'm Bruce Stavala from Stavala Corp. We have a parcel of land on the corner of Gold and Myrtle in Norfolk, Mass. A part named Mike Whalen over here, and we have approximately thirteen acres that we're developing. We have two houses, two Form A lots out front, and we have another section out back that we're thinking about giving to the town of Norfolk. At one point, the DPW wanted some land for their well, and they still want it, so we're trying to... We have this parcel of land behind the two lots that we wanna turn into an estate lot, because, and we wanna bring a road about two hundred feet in and make access to the estate lot. I have a plan here, if you want me to show it to you, and be right back.
You wanna clip it up to the board?
All right, thanks.
Just curious, has the ownership of that property changed, or is it in the same ownership? Just because this has come up, I think, before the board a few years back, I recall.
Tried several times, you know, do different things each time. Things have, like, when I first bought the land, Wildlife and Fisheries wanted to get, and then during the course of the time, they came in and they did a couple of things. They kinda screwed a couple of things up.
They don't usually go away once they're in. They don't usually go away once they're... Once they've found the site.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, things are looking a little better for us. So what we're donating to the town, if we can get this access for the estate lot, you'll see right off of Myrtle Street, you'll... I'm showing a... About two hundred feet in, and then we're gonna come in with an access road to the estate lot, marked in orange, which is four point three, and that's about eight acres or so, and marked in pink, which is about ten foot right away along Gold Street, and then comes around as a radius for the well and come back and around, so the town will be picking up a little bit more than three acres there.
So this is the estate lot?
Yeah, right, right. Everything that's marked in pink would be the land that I'm gonna donate for the town if, you know, if they could help me out and grant me that right to have an estate lot in there, so...
Why don't you go over the Gold Street setup, Bruce, like, who owns it?
Well, half the road is owned by Todd Gronruss, and also, there's another house on the corner here of Gold Street and Myrtle. I don't know his name.
So you need their permission to put that roadway there up two hundred feet?
Um, do I need their permission?
Is it on the land?
That I don't know. That I don't know. I wish I'd...
You have Gold Street as being a private street, right?
I mean, I own half of the street, so...
Well, then, you can't be denied access, then.
Right, right, but, I mean, this is what I'm proposing, you know, I'd like to, you know, help the town out and also help myself out.
So this no-disturb zone looks different from other plans we've seen? There's been other... Did they...
I haven't really submitted any plans. I mean, there's plans probably floating around, but nothing's really been submitted. I've submitted a couple of plans to Wildlife and Fisheries.
Yeah, and so...
And they've okayed everything that I've thrown in.
So what you're saying is they've had different... They've allowed different areas to be...
No, they're very flexible. They've been working with us the whole time, and I don't think I'd have any, you know, any problems with them. They've been very good, so... You know, and I'm still giving them do-not-touch areas, so they're okay with that.
So do you have fifty... You need fifty feet of frontage for an estate lot, right? Fifty feet. Isn't that right?
Yes.
Do you have fifty feet from here to here, from your lot line to the end of your roadway? You just have to have your frontage, fifty feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, definitely, yeah, yeah. And I've widened... What I've done is where the access road comes into the estate lot, I've widened that, so if you had to get an emergency vehicle in there to turn around, you can do that.
Yeah.
So, you know, basically, you know, I'm just improving the road by paving it. I'm not bringing any utilities or anything down there because, you know, I'll drill a well for an estate lot.
You created a kind of hammerhead turnaround here anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's wide enough, it's big enough for, you know, a truck to get in and out, so...
My recollection was that if it had been yourself who had come to the board some years ago, I remember Bob McGee was here, who, of course, is in charge of our DPW, and he was very interested in proving that that road,
that Gold Street, he had envisioned some drainage, country drainage, that he felt would be appropriate
and would solve issues as far as stormwater for any improvements made to that roadway. And I know he was very keen on improving access to the well at the time, but that was some years ago.
Yeah, I mean, he still would love access, you know, this way also to the well, you know? He still thinks that, you know, I'm not speaking for him because he's not here tonight, but, you know, he had said several things to me over the years, and he had said that, you know, he still thinks this area is still viable for the town.
So, on this two-hundred-foot roadway for Gold Street, Bruce, are you gonna do that to town specs, or are you looking for...
Well, I didn't see the reason to, because it was just for one lot. I'm not going the whole length. There's really no reason to, I wouldn't think.
I was wondering if it was one lot or if it was two, because he... Bruce described these first two lots as A and R, where he has the driveway coming off of the private, off of the... So that makes it the frontage, right? The frontage on a private street?
Yes.
Well, I got the frontage on Myrtle.
But when you... Isn't the frontage where you put your driveway?
Yeah, by definition.
No.
Oh, is it by definition?
Well, it's kind of the... It is the other way around. Your access has to come through the frontage.
So this is a corner lot, and so...
So could you move the driveway to Myrtle Street?
I don't know why that drawn in there.
He's got a...
Well, it's nice having it on another road, because Myrtle Street's busy.
Right.
Satisfied to require me to move it to Myrtle Street.
Well, it's just that no-disturb area.
Well, then you just move it over.
What we had talked about before, it's gonna keep coming up, because we had Ron Nation with those lots there that he wanted to do off of Priscilla. And he came in with his attorney's review saying that it just has to be a driveway and not done to town road specifications. And then Bob Bullock said that when you look at our zoning and defined frontage, which gives a lot buildability, frontage had certain criteria being a town-accepted road, and this is also, I wasn't part of it, isn't this also like, a little bit like MacArthur, where there's a grandfathered lot back there, but the access to it is an old paper street that needed a lot of waivers and is deciding the man wanted to put a driveway as compared to a road, et cetera, et cetera, so I think this is like the third case, all in the same...
This one doesn't have the physical limitations.
Exactly.
And it also doesn't... It's not connecting with, I mean, the MacArthur one still had another street for connectivity. This is...
So what we're talking is, is almost like a... Well, it's somewhat like Toils and Road when Jack Scott went through, only that one, they were connecting Chapter ninety money on for years, so they're pretty much obliged to work that out, but it's the definition of frontage, and when can you have something that's a driveway, not a street, counted as your frontage to get a lot off of?
Well, that's why they have a road in here.
Is a road a town-accepted road with drainage or just a paved driveway? I think Bruce is looking to do a paved driveway.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, if this influences that discussion, but, you know, there's a residence further down on Gold on the left. There's a home there.
I mean, I would, you know, widen it a little.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna just keep the same width. I'll widen it, you know?
It's a private road.
If it were me, I'd say it has to be to at least minimum town standards.
Where was that house down on Gold Street? I don't see it.
It's down, it's the very end, yeah.
So he has, his access is from Myrtle Street all the way down this private way into his?
Yeah, and I...
Is counted as his frontage?
And Bruce, that's a dirt road, isn't it? Like a dirt road?
Well, if you...
No?
It's his lot line right here, and this is paved all the way down to his house.
Oh, okay, okay.
So does his house have a finished road in front of it, or...
Well, I mean, it goes right to his driveway, you know, so it's not dirt.
Yeah, I think it's probably pavement that has been there for a long time type of thing, you know, that, but...
Still paved, eh?
Yeah, and it's a residential property there with a driveway and, you know, somebody living there and all that good stuff, so...
I think it still gets plowed, too.
There you go. Well, plus, it's access to the well, too.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
So if you could find us... Show us some way that you can do, say, simple drainage, if you wanna do simple drainage, some country drainage or something back here, because you have lots of land, deal with any drainage that you have to do. We could probably reduce what we require for our roadways standards, but we've had many two-lot subdivisions in this town, where they've had a road put in.
The point that Ron Nation was making, which I thought was the same here, was that he said he did not need a subdivision filing, that he was talking about, what was it, Ray, a road improvement?
Road improvement.
A road improvement, and he didn't wanna file a subdivision plan to access his two lots, because he said, in theory, that he could be denied on, and he didn't wanna take a chance of being denied, so he was just gonna pave that dirt road accessing his... chance of being denied. So he was just gonna pave that dirt road accessing his two lots.
Bruce is here for an estate lot, so he's not having, making that argument.
Yeah, I mean, let me, I guess let me reframe it. So if the applicant wasn't making any improvements there at all, that is considered a viable road right now because there's a residence already on it, right? I mean, I think maybe for the value of the property, you want to improve that section of the road to improve, you know, improve the value of...
So what is, what is frontage described in zoning, Gino? When it says a lot should have the proper frontage, what, don't we define frontage?
Yes, we have a definition for frontage.
And that's what Bob was saying, and he just went by the corridor line.
I think it's essentially that where the access is... The portion of a lot contiguous with the street or right-of-way line and providing access there, too, for the purpose of determining yard requirements, well, it just says you have to measure setbacks from both streets if it's on more than one street.
I mean, if there's a concern about the improvement, what I envision is Bob McGee working with you to come up with some vision, because I think he's going to want to probably continue those improvements further into Gold Street anyway. So through mitigation, what have you, that type of funding, the town can make the improvements as opposed to you making them directly. If there is any concern about that being a precedent or something like that, I would think...
You're talking about beyond this point?
No, just right, that, that point right there. I mean, just those improvements on Gold. You know, if this is part of a bigger plan that Bob has to improve Gold Street further, you know, further down Gold Street, you know, we probably can structure something where through the mitigation funds from you, the developer, that, those improvements would be made by the DPW.
Right, yeah.
I don't know, Gino, if that solves any concerns.
No, I don't. But the only reason I'm improving it, it's just a little bit better access to the estate lot. I mean, Bob's not gonna repave this road. I don't, you know, the town may do it.
Year down the road, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't be planning on them doing it soon.
No, I mean, you know, it's up to you guys later on in life, you know, when you decide you want to do something.
No.
Just a curious question and not connected with this road discussion, but the shape of the piece of land that you're donating to, proposing to donate to the town is kind of odd. Why does it have this long arm? Why is this long arm here?
Well, the only reason that this, so you have an easement to do whatever you want to do.
On behalf of owner of the roof.
Who knows? You might want to do something years down the road. That's why I thought it was viable. That was kind of the plus for you guys.
Okay, thanks.
My question, too, would be, you know, you've sort of drawn a rough line anyway of the do not disturb. It's, I know it's rough. And you've had some input from Fishery and Wildlife, but getting some input from Concom. Because my memory, too, is there's a lot of different sensitivities going on down here environmentally. So, you know, one of the concerns I have is that that dotted line just keeps, you know, growing and growing and growing and shrinking, shrinking the developable area.
When's the last time it was flagged, witnessed and flagged? We can check and see. If it was more than five years, you'd have to have it flagged again.
We have to check with Donnie.
Yeah.
So it just might be something to look into before you get too much further with it because...
Yeah, I mean, these areas that you're talking about, as far as conservation, you know, this area, there's hardly any, there might not even be any water there right now. And this area over here, they're very, very small areas. I mean, we did flag them, but they're very, very small areas. You can walk over there and you can see for yourself that there's really not much going on in either place.
You still have to have them flagged.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, that's no problem. But, you know, that's Donnie and you can see when the last time it was flagged, and that should be no problem.
Was the original plan to have a curb cut on Myrtle and then have that tie into Gold? Or, it's just vaguely familiar to me in terms of...
I remember a cul-de-sac. I remember a long cul-de-sac.
It was more substantial than this.
Yeah, there's so many different plans that I've tried to come up with that haven't worked. You know, putting a five-lot subdivision in here straight off of Myrtle was just too expensive. And trying to access, you know, trying to keep wildlife and fisheries happy with all the do not disturb and the retention ponds and this, that, and the other thing. It just didn't make sense. We couldn't afford it.
So if you're using this driveway, Bruce, for your frontage, what is the frontage on that, on that new proposed road? Is that 200 feet?
Well, there's 200 feet there, yeah. Plus, plus a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, the big plan will show, you know, basically how much.
It's hard to have this conversation without Bob McGee because you spoke of the need for some sort of drainage and Jeff spoke of how, you know, the town has interest in the road. But I've been sitting with engineers long enough to know that it's also the subbase. You know, that you really have to, really have to put in a good subbase to have it last. So there's a lot of issues around building a road, even if it's not to, even if it's not to full subdivision standards. It has to be, it has to be more than, you know, I would put on my private land.
Oh, yeah.
So right now, this is a private way that's not a paper street as far as the town goes? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so don't you need a subdivision plan then just to make this a subdivision street where you've got frontage off it? This isn't a, this isn't even a paper road yet. This is not...
I don't know. You sure about that, Steve, in terms of the status?
About what?
About the status of Gold Street?
It's always been a private way.
Yeah, it's always been a private way as far as I know.
Oh, hey, I used to have that list. And now you have it. Gold Street.
So as a minimum, this has to be subdivided to be a town road regardless of what state of construction it's gonna be in.
Is that true, Gino? I thought that they, that as long as it met certain criteria.
Yeah, and it depends on the status of Gold Street. If it was a, if it was a private way in existence when the subdivision control law came into effect, if it was in existence then, which it appears to be, I don't know, but it appears to be, then it would qualify.
So it's grandfathered then?
Yes, it would be grandfathered.
So all they would have to do is create their frontage?
Yes.
Which is 50 feet?
Right.
Plus the lot in front of it.
Well, I mean, they have, they have to go by, get to their property. But this one here, I mean, they don't have to take the driveway off of there.
200 feet.
But this isn't, this 200 feet, what's the zoning in this, this area? Is it, is frontage 150 feet or is zoneage...
Yeah, 200.
200. So you, so you would, could not get frontage off of the driveway side of this lot?
Why not?
Why?
Because it's not 200 feet?
Well, you could make it 200.
That would bring it up to here.
The gentleman had said it was 200.
Oh, you mean on the estate lot? Instead of doing an estate lot, making a...
No, 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 no. This lot here, the front lot.
The one in the corner?
That's what I was asking. The front lot is not 200 feet deep, so you can't, so you can't get your frontage off of that side.
There's one, and there's two, and there's 50.
You can read that?
Yeah, you got my glasses on, buddy.
You need this one.
I got my...
Yeah, you do. Trust Steve.
Yeah.
Trust Steve.
Look, they're bigger lines.
Just a point here, don't...
See the 100? See 1 plus 0?
But in order to put the driveway off of this, you'd have to go before the zoning board of appeals to put the driveway over here. I mean, it can be done. And there's a good reason for doing it because it's a less busy roadway for people pulling in and out of their driveway. But, but by regulation, you have to take the driveway off of the side, off of the road that you get your frontage from. And since you don't have 200 feet of frontage here, you have to take it off of there.
I think they probably would have stayed through that. I mean, you know, this could be shifted all the way driveway into the front.
Yeah, but I think we're saying we actually have some preferences to get it on, get the driveway on Gold Street. But doing that would require some other steps.
Yeah, it wouldn't be us. We wouldn't be able to tell you.
What is that no disturb area, Bruce, that's in the front here?
What, in the front?
Is that a wetland or is that...
No, no.
It's endangered species.
Just trying to keep the, I don't know, it's like a certain percentage that you have to keep of do not disturb for the wildlife.
It's a natural wildlife heritage area.
I think it was a vernal pool or something over there. Wasn't there?
Don't say that. There's nothing over there.
This has, yes, this has...
Don't say that. No vernal pool.
You'll have a heart attack.
It's note number six.
I thought somewhere in that property.
So this is only priority habitat area?
I would be surprised.
It is, it's priority habitat area.
All right, so he can still get a bypass to put a driveway through their, through natural heritage?
Oh, sure.
Okay, all right. So that wording is...
It's not note number six.
This do not touch area, you know, it can be moved, they can move it, they can play with it. I mean, it's very...
That just says it's part of the natural priority area that he has to...
These things are just things that we put in, so normally submit it to Wildlife and Fisheries, you know.
Normally, we don't put those lines on the plans.
Does anyone have any objections to this? That's the most important part, is whether or not anyone has any objections to it.
Well...
I personally think it's a good way to solve the problem here.
The part that would go to the town shows a radius of 350 feet from the well. Usually it's 400 feet.
I know, well, it has to be 400 feet. They can, they can play with that.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you're gonna have to, you know, maybe drill another well, another 50 feet back maybe, or maybe I'll move the line 50 feet, you know. We'll play with it.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not written yet.
Well, also, there's this DEP approximate wellhead protection zone that extends outside of that. This, there's a line here that says DEP approved wellhead protection area, Zone 1.
Right.
And usually, so that is outside of the area that you have in public water supply protection.
Yeah, so that's good.
It's really good? I don't know. I don't know. Usually wellhead protection areas have to be protected.
Well, if that line was inside that line, then it would be bad.
No, no, look over here. Look here. This is the part I mean.
Oh, yeah.
That part's fine. This part is outside the gifted area.
You got your radius, though. You got your radius.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a couple of questions here.
Yeah, I mean, we can play with it. No big deal.
I mean, I think there's a couple of people, Bob McGee is one and Bob Bullock, in terms of the question about the road and zoning and such. So you have?
Yeah.
So they, I mean, they on board with, more or less with this?
Yeah, generally speaking, the plan, this is okay with them. Bob McGee is, you know, is very interested in the well location and protecting that site for future. It may not be used in the next year or so, but, you know, in five, 10, 15 years, this may become a viable well site for the town. So it must be, it's a good, it's a good plan to do that. And that's why he would be very much in favor of it for that one reason. And in terms of upgrading Gold Street, he's talked with Bruce and he understands, him and Bruce have talked in depth about what needs to be done on Gold Street. So he's pretty comfortable with the plan. We've sat down at least twice now and gone over the plan. So that's why he's here.
How about Bob Bullock? Was he okay with the frontage and everything with the way he's got the roadway designed here?
Bob had some concern about pulling it off of Gold Street, but if he upgrades Gold Street, that satisfies that requirement.
So I guess Bob is saying the same thing that we were saying.
Right. Yeah, you do have to upgrade the road.
At least as much as you have to do.
Yeah. Yes.
Off, I think, would get it quickly.
I think so, too. I think it's much better than the others, the other plans that we have seen.
Well, the other ones are a little bit more difficult.
Yeah.
A little bit more expensive, you know.
Well, you're trying to get more houses on there, so it's always tough when you're trying to...
Well, you want to try to get your bang for your buck. I mean, you know, you want to try to get your money back and it didn't work for me. So, you know, now I'm kind of like in the hole a little, you know, because I didn't get the five lots, but I was thinking about getting it.
Yeah. Don't you want it five?
Yeah, I want it five. I want it six, but, you know.
Why not?
You know, you try, but sometimes things don't work out. And so, you know, I gotta justify, try to justify.
Well, if you're in a hole, it looks like you're starting to fill it in, so good for you.
Yeah.
I'm still on this, this issue here of...
Wait, hold on one second.
I'm still in this issue here about how it would be nice to, to have the drive off of Gold, have both drives off of Gold Street and therefore getting this frontage. So I'm wondering how flexible this line, which, this, this line here, it seems, because I know it's moved a few times, if it moved again...
No, that, which line is that?
This, this line.
You're talking the Wildlife and Fisheries?
Four, three and four, two.
Yeah. So what I'm wondering is why, is why, why you wouldn't move the lot line, get 200 feet on this side and push, and push the proposed access?
This line here?
Yes.
Not this line.
Yes. I'm saying why, why wouldn't you push the proposed access to the estate lot on the other side of the 200?
You mean move this over here?
Straight up to the wetland.
Over there or...
Stretch everything. So take everything, stretch it down here a little bit.
Yeah, get a minimum, get a minimum of 200.
Well, because you don't want to get into the wetland.
It's a wetland buffer that's backing them up.
You don't want to do that, do you?
And the natural heritage line.
The natural heritage line, he has moved it a bunch of times.
Okay.
So that one can move. The wetland, can he, he can't go, he can't go 99 feet away from the wetland? He has to be 100 feet away from the wetland?
I didn't say that.
I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering because he's, because right now, he is more than 100 feet. And, and the closer we get him to the 100-foot line...
As you know, I can't speak for the board, but he's certainly able to apply to work in the 50 to 100-foot resource area, absolutely. Many people do it.
A lot of people do it.
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm just staying away from it and I'm trying to make the road not as, I don't want to go 300 feet, you know. I want to try to keep it as small as possible.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking 250.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Yeah, that's about 250 right there.
Why get into all of that? The plan that we've got...
Because this driveway is gonna move off of Gold Street. It has to go onto Myrtle and Myrtle's busy.
And he said that's on a protocol form.
It's not, we don't want it.
Well, I'd be willing to accept it in order to get the estate lot approved.
We could still get the estate lot approved. It's just moving a line.
It's bad for Gold Street.
So I don't know. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up.
If he could push it a little more and make that work, that's the win-win. That's what I'm looking at.
Who sets that natural heritage line?
He's moved it.
You set it?
It's on a, it's on a natural heritage plan.
No, actually...
It's an overlay.
You'll have, you go into your, go into Conservation Offices, there's already been a management plan done. And I bet you'll find two or three other versions of this no disturb area.
Aside from the fact, though, the way I've seen natural heritage in my six years is that where he's getting all of this land in the back protected, they would have no issue with him doing anything in front of it.
That's why I think it's only, I think it's the 100-foot line.
That's why, that's why I don't, I don't know why he put all these no disturbers. I think he's hurting himself by doing that because I think he would have permission to have a driveway anywhere in that frontage he wanted if he wanted to.
And, and so you're not opposed to pushing, pushing the road a little bit deeper into the lot so that we can get, we can get frontage on this?
People do it all the time. You would just have to file then, that's all.
I think it might, I think it might make for better land design.
Well, you could also, as I heard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you could take this plan to the zoning board of appeals and try to get approval for the driveway in its current configuration on to Gold Street.
Yes, he could go to the zoning board of appeals. That's probably the easiest thing to do.
Right. With the current land.
So I, you know, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm just bringing it up. This is just a conversation.
Something to think about.
He's got options.
Yeah, he's got plenty of options. Can we help you?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for coming in.
The solar farm's gone, right? The solar farm's gone.
Bruce, I'll keep that. Let's talk about developing this plan and then we'll get you coming back.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you later.
That's all right. You guys can bring it back when you come again. So, Gino, well, we talked about the right-of-way that it was in existence before the subdivision laws. Does that also hold true for a paper road? Would that be the same thing?
Hello, hello, hello. Hi there.
No, no, no.
Because that's Ron Nation. He's got a paper road from way back. Because that's Ron Nation, so he's got a paper road from way back.
It has to have adequate width grades and all that kind of stuff at the time.
So, I guess the most fortuitous thing about all the snow we had over the last couple of months is that it gave me some time to try to grasp, to get my arms around what needs to be done here, study the regs, talk with Ray, and try to devise a plan which I hope addresses all the open issues, because I know the board is terribly in favor of an expedient resolution to those issues and a completion of the project.
Yes.
And as is my client, so we have mutuality of interest there. I think we need to talk briefly about earth removal, building permits, covenant releases by way of a tripartite agreement, and some erosion control mitigation measures. And I'm happy to take those in any order, if you have a preference, or I'll just go right back to the top and talk about each one.
You can start right at the beginning, as you wish.
Thank you. So, Ray and I spent some time with your town by law, Article 7, and also your planning board rules and regs. Um, that's an appendix to the planning board rules, isn't it?
Yes.
And we, we tried to read them and compare notes as to what needs to be done, and I keep coming to the conclusion that earth removal in the context of an approved definitive subdivision is just simply done under the auspices of a subdivision approval, that, um, earth removal permits per se are not necessarily required. So, I, I think when the by law, and the town by law and the planning board rules and regs were written, it was envisioned that when you guys do definitive subdivision approval, you address earth removal as a component part of that work. Um, and to the extent you want to impose conditions, controls, those kinds of things, I think the rules envisioned that you do that at the definitive approval stage. And as best as we can recreate, that really wasn't done in this instance. So, we're left with the open question procedurally, where do we go when it, when it comes to regard, with regard to earth removal? Ray, I think is perhaps going to suggest or recommend that some sort of a public hearing be held, where comment can be, um, addressed. Um, I think in reading the regs, he's come to the conclusion that that maybe is the safest procedural course to, um, to undertake. I'm not sure that it's required under your rules, and I'd love for us to not have to go through that exercise.
I think it is required under our rules. We've, we've always done it as an open hearing.
All right, so there's precedence I'm unaware of?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it comes down to a question of what are those, those controls or measures you want to see us put in place? Um, and the combination of both the town by law and the planning board rules and regs speak to a number of things that need to be addressed in the context of a permit as issued, or in the context of an agreement that we might strike with you, like when we're gonna do it, hours of operation, notice, um, observation, those kinds of things. So, those logistics, I think, are relatively easy to tackle, and I'm hopeful that we can come up with some set of joint recommendations or, or conditions, and just simply hopefully put it in front of you for some sort of a rubber stamp approval. I, I'm a bit troubled by the regs and the inconsistencies in them with regard to the question of building permits. I don't think we can get building permits to issue for these lots and for us to progress with our construction until we have lot releases of the covenant from you. And that's where, um, the, the concept of us presenting a tripartite agreement with a cost to complete, which has already been approved in a public session, comes into play here. And I'm not sure that we could do earth removal without proper building permits in place, so we're sort of in this paradox, this catch-22, what's gonna come first, do you have chicken or egg? Um, I thought the best way to attack this problem is if we're gonna have some sort of a public hearing, in the context of that public hearing, we present to you a proposed agreement that sort of sets forth the trigger mechanisms for each of these component parts to happen. I've shared a first draft with Ray, I don't know if you had a chance?
I did take a look, but I thought it was more important to go through the process than to talk about that agreement first.
But as the end result of that process, I'm hopeful is some sort of an agreement that clearly defines all the logistics of the earth removal, um, in keeping with your regs, issuance of building permits in a timely manner once that's completed, and not as a prerequisite to earth removal, um, and proper issuance of, uh, a covenant release and acceptance of the tripartite agreement based upon the already approved cost to complete. So, I, I'm trying to do this sort of omnibus arrangement that addresses all these open issues. So, for tonight's purposes, I wanted to come in and just explore one more time with you folks before we try to put pen to paper, um, what some of the details are that you're interested in seeing, so that I can hopefully put this thing to rest for everybody's benefit.
Well, the, um, you made one statement, I'm not quite sure it's true, that you can't have any earth, earth removal without lot releases left.
Did you mean that, did you mean that you're not able to identify what earth needs to be removed?
Oh, no.
Or you're saying that you can't actually physically remove the earth until you have a building permit?
A building permit, and we can't get a building permit until we have lot releases.
But that's not a, but a building permit and removing the earth is certainly not a prerequisite for structuring an earth removal permit, right? I mean, the earth removal permit has certain assumptions in it in terms of what homes you're going to build and such, correct?
I think so. I, once again, these, these regs are not well-written.
No, they are.
In my estimation, you know.
We've looked at those things and rolled our eyes many times.
And I'm, I'm almost at this point saying, you know, who cares what they say? Let's work cooperatively to get to the end result everybody wants. So, that's sort of my, my pitch tonight, is let's work cooperatively to get to the end result that everybody wants. And I don't care what, what other things happen, as long as we have agreements that everything will get done, and everything will be issued as needed.
I went through this, this past weekend, I sent Lou a four-page email explaining him, explaining him, to him what, the way I saw the process. And the way I see the process is you've got an earth removal permit that would be based upon the agreed, um, removal of, on this site that the planning board would approve. From there, you would have an agreement of some sort, which...
And this is the basis of it?
Is already put together, the basis of that. You would then allow the lots to be released. You'd have a bond, I'm sorry, I skipped a step. You'd have a bond in place so that we're sure that the, the earth removal permit...
Securing the earth removal work.
Yes, secure that earth removal per, uh, work, and then you do your lot releases. From there, building permits can be issued, um, and each lot would then have the earth removal done on, on those lots themselves. I think one of the concerns that we've had is that we don't just go in there willy-nilly and tear the place apart and leave it a mess again. Uh, and so, my suggestion would be that if we do, um, allow the building permits, we allow them in some sort of form that, that we all agree on, so the timing would be, would be critical in this.
I have two questions based on that. When you pointed the agreement, is the agreement specific to the plan for earth removal only? Is that what the agreement is?
No, it's trying, it's, I'm attempting to draft an omnibus agreement that addresses everything that Ray just said, and the sequencing of it, and the triggers that allow for us to reach that next stage.
So, does it in part have a very specific plan about the earth removal process quantities?
Yeah, so, one of the reasons I kinda stuck this in front of you, this is a working draft, we've got our engineers in tune with the need to draw a plan of earth removal, calculating, um, cut yards, fill yards, net removal, and so forth. So, we're working towards a more complete plan that'll have all the detail that you're interested in seeing.
And use a timeline, so there would be an actual schedule that would be part of it as well?
There would, I think the regs talk to it being done in a five-month window?
Five-month window.
Um, we're desirous of giving you, like, whatever you want, seven or 14 days' notice, and just getting it done. We're gonna bang it out.
How many homes was this, again?
There are five lots in Norfolk.
And working hours?
One, two, three, four, and the fifth doesn't need fill removal, so that's why it's not shown on this. And this is a, this is working at this point.
That's all.
Working hours within that would be, just to make sure it's all memorialized as part of this grand plan as we're reaching the end.
Disagreement will, will address hours, days, which lots are gonna have, be relieved of lumb, uh, lumb gravel, where it's gonna go, what direction it's gonna travel, all those details that you're interested in seeing are addressed.
So, Bessie, have they asked you to get, uh, a, a hearing on, on the agenda?
Not yet.
Because, well, you know, you may want to get something on the agenda as quickly as possible, because this seems reasonable to me.
Well, this was, tonight was informational.
And does anyone have an issue with this, with the way it's, the, the recommended approach?
Well, I'm pretty confident, we, we can't, and I agree with what Lou's saying, we can't, we don't issue building permits, we release lots. Building permits are a different step.
Right.
But right now, if he has a, a cost to complete and bonds that we, from what I understand, are required to release lots, now, which he could do tomorrow, without earth removal permits, he'd be building those houses 20 feet, 30 feet near, whatever, and that would be his choice. Obviously, he doesn't want to do that. So, now the earth removal pot comes in, and, uh, if he wants to get a building permit with different grades with earth gone, then that kicks in. But right now, if you presented us with a cost to complete, uh, and it was bonded, then I believe we're required to release those lots.
Well, but because of the history, we've asked as a condition...
Right.
To that release, to get this information on the earth removal, we've asked as a condition to understand the process, the plan, the details, the timing, and that's been the missing link.
Right. What, what I'm saying is, though, and I, I believe this to be the case, that we can't preclude releasing lots based on another permit that's been in default, that's the issue. We can, we can stop any earth removal from the released lots in the future and not allow an earth removal permit, which means he's building way up in the air, but I think that if he complies with our rules for cost to complete and bonding, I believe we have to release the lots. That's what I was saying. But, of course, they want both. So, I guess it's a matter of working cooperatively to get this done real quick. And like I had said to the folks before, I just want to know how many trucks are working, where the material's going, how much a day is coming out of there, and how many weeks, including rain days, is it gonna take to get everything off that you need? And the plan they submit should be a surveyed plan that's done with a, with a quantity of calculation of what really is coming off of each lot, and that's submitted as part of the earth removal permit. That's how it's always been done.
Uh, just to refresh everybody's recollection, at one point in our last informational exchange, you had talked about sort of doing this piecemeal, one lot at a time, and our discussions broke down that night a little bit, and I sort of withdrew at that point, said, "Let me look into it and come back." We'd really like to do this as a package, and I think it benefits, it behooves everybody if we do it all at once, and just get it over with?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Just get it over with.
Yep.
And, um, another piece of information, if you're prepared to share it with me now, or if you want to sort of think about it and communicate through Ray, you gotta give me a little bit more detail on what you want in terms of the protocol to follow here, because I need to put some meat on the bones of this agreement. I need to write in here.
You can put that together, Ray, can't you?
Yeah, I'll share with the planning board, and then maybe we can...
You know.
A structure on how this is going off, where, when, and how.
No more than 17 trucks at a time, yeah, I'm just, oh, whatever it is. You, you need to give me that, so I can get it into black and white.
Can any of the other prior earth removal decisions be used as a basis for this?
I mean, we have a lot in there, it's just that this project, because there's so much earth, you know, this one is a bit special, which is why we did have the conversation about how many trucks, do you do it all at once and just try to get it done, or do you, you know, stage it over a longer period of time?
The sensitivity is in the neighborhood about all of this, too, and I, we want to be cognizant of that. And, you know, understandably, we're gonna disrupt the area for a little bit while we do this, and if we get it all done quickly and over with, and it never happens again, that's benefits everybody.
With the side conditions, if he takes the lot, if he takes the material off of one lot where this is pretty much sandy gravel, you're gonna have a, a hazard there created by a 20-foot straight cut that could collapse on some young kids. So, probably the best way, in my thinking, is just to take it all off at once, but, again, before you start with agreement, you need to know the quantity of yards. So, basically, if you come up with a quantity of yards, and you've got ending elevations on where it's gonna be when it's done, one of the requirements in all of the earth removal, even though they're different in the, in the bylaws and the regs, is that the, the amount that you're taking off has to be the minimum required and reasonable. So, when you come up with how much is coming off, this is the elevation, we can look at the footprints of the house and say, "We agree with that, amount has to come off, that's a reasonable amount," and you're not mining the stuff, and then we come up with a schedule to take the whole thing off with a bond.
And I do think the regs sort of contemplate that every lot sort of gets a, what is it, a free 500 yards?
Yeah, you get 500 yards each lot.
And, and in Ray and I's discussion, in the exchange of emails, we sort of agreed that the foundation, removal for foundation purposes is sort of without this process.
Right.
Is that a way to put it?
Right.
And we need to back those numbers out of these, these tentative numbers, and I think if you, we do that, you'll find that we're not really removing as much as you think we are.
I don't think that, I think Mr. Rocker mentioned that before, I think this 22,000-yard number, so it's probably really high.
I thought it was a plan, but it was going to need some of it, because 6,000, we lost eventually.
Right. Sorry, Bill.
We actually might get down, we might just talk about a threshold of 10 before we need to get into all kinds of other things, and we might actually be down in that 10,000 range.
Okay.
I believe there was approximately $6,000 to $8,000, which was loom and subsoil, which we are going to need loom to put back onto the project, and the rest was gravel, but we could lose some of that.
I'd be happy to work with you on those calculations, come up with the, the numbers, and then we can move forward at, with those numbers.
So, that's great, and thank you. So, I have this base agreement, I've shared it with Ray, he probably needs a little bit more time to, to digest it. I need to work with him on some more, as I put it earlier, a little bit more meat on the bones on this thing in terms of number of trucks, hours of operation, all that kind of stuff, but those should be easy issues to tackle. I need to get our engineers to do a little bit more sharpening of their pencil to help us figure for each of the four lots that are gonna be affected here, how many actual number of net yards are we gonna lose, and where is it gonna go? Some of it's gonna stay and be topsoil and so forth. Um, I think my clients have an interest in bringing it out through Franklin. Um, they have other lots that are yet to be finished there, and they could probably use some of this there, and rather than sell it and then have to buy it at twice the price from somebody else, they might see a cost benefit to themselves of just bringing it to their available lots in Franklin. So, those are the kinds of details you're gonna see when I come back with what I hope to be a final agreement.
All right.
So, I mean, if you're looking for the lots to be released all at once, so that you can get the building permit, so you can move the earth, you know, the, the way that we could perhaps get some protection is through the bonding, and I guess the, the question I have, because we haven't, in my tenure on the board, I don't recall a project quite like this where it's, um, been outside of the subdivision process, okay? What does the bonding look like for something like this? What, what do we expect for the work to be?
Regrading, regrading, looming, and seeding. So, whatever's not taken out by the time period, we have the right to go in and regrade, loom, and seed, and stabilize the area.
So, that'll be our protection in the form of the bond, if, within reason, the deadlines aren't met, as long as we're on the same page, that's...
So, that's something you think we should get going on, some sort of a calc as to what that might be?
Absolutely.
I think that's a first.
Because that's a number you're gonna be interested in knowing.
That's, in, in theory, that's what we should be bonding, because we can't take it off on our own, we can't force you to take it off, but we can force it to be restabilized. I had a question, Ray, are you sure, are you sure that you can't get an earth removal permit without a building permit? I thought you could.
You can get an earth removal permit without a building permit with the town by law.
Okay.
And it's a separate process, it's a separate thing.
So, we can assume that we can use that to have this move forward before they get the building permits?
No, no, because you go, you have a subdivision here, and so you have all these, so, in essence, if you use that other, the town by law...
I'm at the selectmen, and not in front of the planning board.
Right, you'd be, that, that by law says that each individual lot would have to have its own building permit, because you're in the, in the middle of a subdivision.
Earth removal permit.
Uh, earth removal permit. Because you're in the middle of a subdivision, you don't want to do that, so you want to handle it so that you have some...
The reason I, I, I mention it, then, you guys get to get going, because the place is, is filled with debris, the catch basins have to be cleaned, there's sand everywhere, and they've walked away from orders that could, they've walked away from a notice of intent, they're in violation. So, while, like I talked about this five months ago, that's still in effect, so all that's gonna hold you up with building permits.
And I know we've got CONCOM to address, but that's not for tonight.
No, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is that if you're looking to get this earth removal going, all of these steps, since now Ray says you need a building permit, all of these steps are gonna preclude you getting the earth removal started. That's what I'm saying, and that's why I mentioned it months ago.
Yeah, I, I think it's very important that the solar erosion controls get put in place, and there's nothing out there now. They've been put on notice over a year ago, that there was nothing out there.
My hope is when I come back...
No work has been done, and we don't, I don't want to go down there, but all I'm saying is that...
My hope is when I come back with this in final jointly recommended form...
Yeah.
That that's done.
Yeah, and that's all I'm saying, is get it done.
Not even a point of discussion that night.
Yep.
That's my hope.
That's what I've been sitting here struggling with, is that we might have a joint desire to get it done quickly, but we still have to have that agreement talk about erosion control, and we still have to have penalties in place if the timing doesn't.
Andrea, I find it simpler than that. I find that it should be in place today.
Yeah, but it isn't.
Or very soon.
What if it falls out of compliance again?
As soon as...
You know?
There should be some penalties on it, and that's part of the bonding. The bonding would be for the soil erosion controls. If they're not maintained, we get to go in and maintain them and charge them for it.
At our expense.
Yeah.
So we're going to be signing this agreement as part of an earth removal permit that really can't be applied for until you've got building permits, which all of these things have to preclude.
But we can't actually sign an agreement if we're going to go into a public process, right? Because the purpose of a public process
Right.
Is to be informed.
You wouldn't sign it until you had your public hearing.
Until the hearing is done.
And review the agreement as part of the public.
But to repeat myself, we can't even start the hearing until there are building permits, from what Ray's saying.
No, 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 no.
You can start the hearing before that.
You start the hearing, you do the earth removal permit
Can't do the work.
And then the work happens after the building permit.
Except the erosion control work, which could happen as soon as the snow melts.
Anything.
Yes.
Okay.
That moves it quicker than, okay.
So there's some erosion control, there's some hailways, there's some catch basins to clean.
Yes.
You should share with me other things that you think need to be addressed.
Sure, yeah. There's plenty of...
That's what I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a complicated thing either. It's, there's some slopes that you have to work on and come up with a plan to deal with that. I'm sure as a part of the original plans, there were some erosion controls that should have been in place, but I don't see anything today.
So if I walk away with a warm, fuzzy...
Don't walk away.
Fuzzy feeling. Oh, okay, I can't walk away yet. He's got questions.
Arthur's got his wrench ready.
This, you opened this discussion saying that we have a mutual interest to finish this project, and I think, I agree with you on that. However, this has been going on for a long time, a long time. I see one of the butters sitting in the back there who, well, he's just sitting in the back there.
We'll hear from him.
And there's another party who has an interest in moving this along. Let's do the other butters in the general area. It would seem to me that at this point, one of the things that would really sweeten the deal here and make the signing of an agreement go down very easy is if you were, you and your clients were to volunteer, in addition to the bond, a little sweetener that says, you know, "If we don't meet these commitments, we will contribute X dollars to the town."
That's the penalty I was talking about.
Yes, that's what you were talking about. And if we don't complete it, X months, we'll give even more.
He's talking liquidated damages.
That's what he's talking about.
Because...
He didn't call it that. That's what he's talking about.
This is, this has really been dragging on and on and on and on and on, and we don't want that to happen again.
Well...
So I'm just putting an idea out there that would really
Thank you.
Make it go down a little easier.
I can, the only thing I should and can say tonight is, I was introduced to this in November. And with 10-plus feet of snow, whatever it's been, and there's not much that I could do in the last three months. But I'm working with as much diligence as I can. What happened before me happened before me. I'm trying to repair the rapport. I'm trying to be cognizant of what your regulations require, as complicated and as arcane as they are. And I'm trying to just put forth a plan that, once again, is in everybody's best interest.
All right, well, why don't you work with Ray and try to get something together on that? I just want to see if we can hear anything from the public.
I don't have anything to say.
Oh, you have nothing to say?
There's work that seems to have been done already.
Now, are you in agreement with us that just get it done as quickly as possible?
Yes, I am.
I would be in favor of putting something in there to schedule, I don't know if it's two meetings there over five months to review the status of the work, you know?
So observation's part of what your regs require, and that will be in my agreement. So you'll absolutely want to see, when we call you and say we're done with gravel removal, you want to send somebody out.
So he's talking something different, though. He's talking about presentation here to the board, perhaps, of, you know, progress against the plan.
We've been there before. Last time it didn't work.
And not from an engineering controls review, but from a presentation to the board.
Not that observation isn't a wonderful thing, and you might want that as well.
Yeah, you have to see it. This is a site that's very unusual. You got to see it.
Well, without violating the law, if you folks want to jot your ideas down and share them with Ray, he's going to be my point of communication. So the things you're thinking, I won't know about unless you communicate them to him and he to me.
Yeah, we did it before.
Other than you're just hearing them right now.
Okay. In terms of procedure, you're going to want notice of a public hearing, or is it just putting it on the agenda for a public hearing discussion enough?
No, no, we need notice.
Isn't there an application?
Yeah, there is an application, isn't there?
There are certain things that need to be done, so...
So publication and some things?
Yeah. As quick as we can get that done.
I want to move with as much haste as I can.
It'll be in May now.
Yeah.
It'll be in May?
In May. I'm assuming it must be due soon.
What's the minimum notice requirement?
I need three weeks. I have to add in two weeks prior, too.
That's not a wavable requirement? I mean, this is an open subdivision. It's...
Let's look into that. We'll see what we need to, yeah, let's see what we need to do.
Do you know, that's the public hearing process.
Yeah, but...
I think the question really is, is it required to go through a public hearing process? I think maybe some notice might be appropriate. That's kind of...
I think notice is required.
Yeah, it may be required, but stepping down from required, at a minimum, it's appropriate to give notice
Yes.
I think on this, on this...
Because of the history.
And what exactly we're required to do, I don't know. Maybe we can look into that and make sure that we...
I try to, but I can't get through it.
Yeah.
You can't figure it out.
Which means that it's not the standard subdivision to...
You may think that, yeah. I'd like a little bit of time to be able to really dig through it. If I could use Gino's assistance, that would be wonderful, and just try to get to a place where I think we're all comfortable and we think we're abiding by the state law and local laws.
Well, then you'll know, then by doing that effort, you'll know how to improve the language for the next town meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, because those regs need help.
Yeah, we definitely have to go through them.
Okay, so
Okay.
If I may leave with that warm and fuzzy feeling, that we have at least the beginning of an accord.
Mm-hmm.
And it's my job to put it on paper.
Yes.
And to come back to you in some sort of a public hearing forum where you guys are just so pleased as punch to sign something. That's the goal here?
That's what usually happens.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right, break. Thanks a lot. Marshall Street Gray Property.
Nope, you're just reviewing the decision.
Oh, are we? Do we have it here?
You do, yep.
Okay. See you later. How far down this list are we going to, what do we have to get done on this new old business?
That's, it's not much. You'll go quick.
Nothing goes quick.
It's not as bad as it looks.
Well, the annual schedule's already done.
Yeah.
Well...
And the reminder's done.
It's a lot of reminders and things like that.
I don't think the annual schedule is done. I'd like to comment on that.
Open for suggestions.
Indeed.
Well, let's do the Marshall Street Gray property decision first.
Yes, because I've got to get that, I've got to get in the files.
Betsy, I have one from March 3rd. Was there any edits made?
Nope, I only changed the date at the top.
Okay.
So Ray, when you get this application for the earth removal permit, you make sure it's complete.
Oh, yeah.
With the grades, with the calculations, all of that. You want to rush to an agreement, but after 10 years, I don't want to rush to anything.
Nope. Nope. We could have started this in January also.
Well, the mess I talked about for the building permits, that's still there.
Yeah.
It's going to take time. It's going to take, believe me, it's going to take time.
Absolutely.
So I'm trying to press that to him, but you and you talk.
I don't have any corrections at all on this.
Nope.
Oh, my God.
A plus plus.
Well, it's especially easy when they're not proposing to do anything with the land.
Yeah, yeah. True. All right, does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I actually have a couple just editorial questions.
Oh, you do?
I mean, I think it's, I think, I have no conceptual problems with it. I just got hung up on the first paragraph of page two, trying to figure out, I was just really confused by the facts there, and that kind of followed through. So there is, there's an existing parcel of 500, of 5.56 acres, and he wants to create an estate lot of 4.28 acres, which I think might be the 186,000 square foot lot that we're talking about down below. And then there's a second lot of 55.7, right? Of 55,000?
Mm-hmm.
It's that first, this whole thing in the front, because you're talking about two lots, the last, the last sentence is unclear if you're talking about which, what do you, which of the lots you're speaking of. So I think the last, I think the last sentence is, "The owner has 55,784 square feet of remaining land with a frontage of four, of 400, 246 and change, frontage." But then what is the required circle in the zoning? Is that descriptive of the estate lot, or is that descriptive of the land that's left?
Descriptive of the land that's left.
Yeah, you don't need a circle for the estate lot. But, but those numbers don't add up now that you've, now that you've brought it up. That whole issue of 5.56 acres, if you take away the estate lot of 4.28 acres, you're ending up with greater than an acre.
Yeah, that's 55,000.
And that's not 55,000. Greater than an acre is greater than 55,000.
Well, acre's 43.
43,000. Acres, 43,000.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
43,560.
So, so if the 4.28 acres, is that the 186,000
Yeah.
We're talking about, so if you put that there
Yeah.
I think it's just, I think it's just the remaining land of the owner has, 55,000 square feet of area, is just a little awkward.
Well, instead of saying the word land, you could say the remaining 1.28 acres.
Or the owner has 1.2 remaining acres of land.
Yeah.
And then, then the required circle and meeting the, and meeting the zoning requirements for a building lot is related to that second lot. So once, once I understood the facts at the beginning, then everything fell into place.
I wouldn't object to this change.
No.
It's just clarifying.
Clarifying, sure is.
Yeah.
It's fine. Yeah, it's fine.
Are you making a motion on that?
I am.
Pressure's on now.
There you go. I move to approve decision number 2015-01, special permit application for the Marshall Street, with the one clarification on the paragraph describing the amount of acreage divided by, into the two parcels.
This is on map 19, block 71, lot 1, right?
Yes, it is.
All right.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, sure, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Got you got the sheet what's there.
Amendments to the community development plans.
We talked about that last week.
What's that?
We talked about that last week.
Last week.
Last meeting.
I have the mylar plans, so that will...
Well, what it is actually is part of the open space and recreation plan update, the goals and objectives for that plan.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for input from the planning board. The, the, the list that you have...
The, the, the list that you have in front of you as part of the packet, the, the goals and objectives are actually virtually identical to the ones from the nineteen ninety-four plan, or nineteen ninety-six plan. And, I mean, they seem generic enough that they still fit, they still seem to be, one of the changes was under goal four is, there's an addition about encouraging support trail development and trail connections where possible, which wasn't in the original set. And one other one that's, that's not in here that's related to that, that I thought, and I'd like input from you on, the survey indicated strong support for sidewalks. I thought under that same section, related to the trail development and enhancing public access, one way to enhance the public access to the open spaces through additional sidewalks, which could also serve as trail connection, off, on-road trail connections. The, we do have, the conservation commission did review this already, and they had a suggested addition to reestablish the conservation fund, which is, is not reflected in here, in here yet, but will be added in.
What else did the public survey come out with? As I, I mean, you had a really good response to the public survey.
Fantastic, it was unbelievable. Almost four hundred responses, and best of all, all but eight online.
So they've galleyed themselves.
Yes.
So what else, besides sidewalks, what else were they, what other, were the main names?
Well, the, and tomorrow night is, is the public forum at, with the community preservation committee. But the most stunning finding, I thought, was the, the, the way the public views the existing state of recreation facilities versus nineteen ninety-four, when the survey was done for the ninety-six plan. I, I don't have the figures in front of me, but the, the numbers of excellent and good increased dramatically, and the number of poor fell, oh, oh, thank you.
Just happened to have one.
Yeah. If, if you can just see these bars, the blue, the blue bars are the current responses, and the first two are excellent and good, and the last two are fair and poor. Just, I mean, since, since that was done, the Pond Street Recreation Facility went in, Four Kicks and the Norfolk Arena reopened, and
New playgrounds.
The, the new Kids Place, so lots of, lots of great things that had happened, so it kind of supports that, that finding. And then in the, in the question on ranking the top five desired facilities, and this is where I, I was surprised at the sidewalks, how sidewalks, the swimming pool came out number one, the highest, the average rank from one, one to five was two point four-three for swimming pool, and sidewalk was right behind it at two point four-five, was the second most highly desired feature. So, so those are, I thought, the highlights of the, of the survey.
What did the survey say, if anything, about quantity of recreation space? Not quality, quality was quite good, but what about?
Actually, that's a good, very good question, because there was some element, it wasn't a majority, but what did increase on that was the, the feeling for the need for additional recreation facilities was reduced from nineteen ninety-four. And in fact, some of the paper ones, people wrote on and on about, we don't need any more recreation facilities, we have enough now. So, that was another interesting finding.
Does sustainability and energy resources play a role in this at all? It wasn't an issue back in ninety-six, but it's become a more important issue over the years.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good comment for our goals, the goals and objectives. It wasn't a question.
Yeah.
But, but we could, we could amend the goals and objectives to, to address that.
Yeah, I just, I may not be able to make it tomorrow night, expect, I know I can't make it tomorrow night. So, I mean, we do have this energy committee, and they have been, you know, they have been meeting, but it'd be nice if, if we could pick up their mission in this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite sure how that relates to open space and recreation directly.
That's why I didn't, I didn't know if it's, if, if the open space and recreation scope had changed, because it's being, if it, if the scope itself, if they, if the secretary's office asks you to do more than they did back in ninety-six.
I don't believe so. They, they do on, well, I shouldn't say they do, but for, for master plans, energy is, in the, in the proposed reform of land use, state land use legislation, energy will become a component, a required component of master plans, but it's not at present, but that, so you're right, that is the direction that it's, that it's going.
So it would, in, in here, it's increased environmental awareness among, among all sectors, and it could fit into there in terms of an environmental awareness issue. And that's just strictly, that's just the genericness. It could be something as specific as, do we meter, do we keep track of, of how our solar field? Is there a place on the web where people can check to see how much money we're making?
Good question.
But in terms of environmental awareness?
Like a dashboard, almost?
Yeah, like a dashboard. She says, looking at her Fitbit.
I don't.
No, but, because people ask me that question all the time. You know, how much are we making on it? What do we?
Right, what do we generate?
Good question. So Gino, your comment, as far as, you know, the state's going to require energy to be a component of the master plan, that's because the master plan is used sometimes if somebody, if a town is submitting an application for grant, so they'll, they'll want to see it. But that's the extent of it, right? I mean, the town acts autonomously in terms of the master plan.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But to the extent that that document is necessary to be used for grants and things and
Right.
Transit-oriented development, or other things that
Sure.
You know, we've discussed, it would have to be in there, right? Okay.
So anything other than the, the alterations that we have already discussed?
I'm gonna, the CPC, CPC has developed a matrix for developing land, or for, for ranking land, and some of those priority factors are in here, and some of them aren't. So, we should pull that out and make sure that they, they connect together. What, because I can't make the meeting tomorrow night, if I take this on the train, and if you gave me a copy of what, if you have a presentation of what you're going to do tomorrow night, or the survey results, I can send an email to you and, and the board with some comments and questions.
Okay.
And I'll pick up, I have my, my land criteria ranking sheet at home. So if I refer to it, somebody there at the meeting might have it. Okay?
Terrific. I'll email you that, the presentation.
Okay. You have to send it to my, you have to send it to my state address. Oh, both of them, send it to both. If you sent, because I can, you can, actually, if we can print it out tonight?
I have it printed out.
Oh, perfect. And then if you just send it electronically, I'm going to be doing this on the train.
Trains are running well. My ticket?
It's been a whole
Back to normal.
It's been a whole two days. Yep, the past two days have been
That's progress.
Much better than the last two months.
Good.
Sounds like a streak. Are there zoning articles for us to look at? How many?
No, we don't have anything.
We don't have anything?
We don't have it tonight.
But we have this one.
We just have that one, which I had, I haven't even given to them. I figured we'd give the planning board the entire thing.
Right.
What, what are the topics? Because I think at the last meeting, there wasn't going to be any.
I put together a bylaw for a multifamily housing district based on town, the town center area, about a two thousand foot radius off of the train tracks and one fifteen, and looking at, trying to increase the opportunities for multifamily housing in this area. The auspices of that, or where, where it really came from was, we, we have this one oh six, one oh eight main street. I met with the developer there for that project. We talked about what his ideas were. We, I also broached the idea of, if the town had a different process, would you do that? And he said, absolutely, I would, I would definitely do that. So with that in mind, I talked to the town administrator, selectmen that were aware, I put something together, I actually stole something from another town that we're working on, and very quickly put something together. I'm not sure if it's, if it's the perfect fit for Norfolk, but it's, it's certainly something to, to talk about and kick around. You know, I, I'm hopeful that it would get passed, but I'm not sure that it will. But it's certainly something that I think the town, from my perspective, the town could use. We've got this town center, we've got a desire to bring in more commercial development. There's, there's certainly some opportunity to have a higher density within the town. We're not talking transit-oriented development type density, talking something lower than that. In fact, the state does this thing where they, they have a transit-oriented development light, which we're not even there, we're sort of the light, light, the extra light, if you will. So I, I put together something that asks for about five units, or allows five units per acre, very similar to what you see, you saw at one oh six, one oh eight. And also Tommy DePlastido's development is just slightly below that.
You mean rivers?
Yeah, river's edge, yeah. Minimum two acres of land in order to qualify, moving more towards a apartment building, hoping that you would get more apartment buildings rather than, so that you can get more affordable. That's what I was driving at. If you get apartments, twenty-five percent of the apartments, if they're affordable, the entire building becomes acceptable as affordable.
All the units.
I didn't prepare anything for tonight to talk about that, but just to give you some, and we'll send that out very shortly, probably maybe before the end of the week, to get that out to everybody. But I wanted to send the whole package with all the articles, so that you had everything, not piecemeal.
And all the articles are on that same theme?
No, no, there's a bunch of other articles, I mean, your typical financial articles with the budget. There's another article that was brought
Oh, it's the warrant?
Yeah, yeah, there's another warrant article for allowing two house lots on a private road, only two, that was brought forth by one of our residents. That one, I can't think of too much more about that.
People are very creative when they want stuff.
So, Ray, quick question, is there any thought on strategy, or maybe it's already happened to have any, or maybe it shouldn't happen, I don't know, what the strategy would be on conversations with Peter Diamond, since he was the author of the most current bylaw that significantly changed the area now that we're talking about
I've talked to Peter, you know, I will say this, Peter does not want to see any more density around town center, I'm not sure even around town.
Right.
So
And I'm, just where there's, in the most recent town meeting, some significant changes down there, I wonder what the appetite would be for yet another significant change, and if it would be
Uphill.
An uphill battle.
It will, it will be uphill.
Oh, yes.
Because there were a lot of people that, that showed up last year for that.
I fully understand.
And I, I only wonder if there is a strategy to, to sort of educate that, that this is looking at like even less than a middle ground, right? You know, less than a middle ground, and whether that's even worth the effort or not worth the effort, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm
Maybe not.
Is a month, after, after everything's all settled, we'll probably have a better idea as to what we did wrong, but I think just trying to go forward and trying to do something.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, I, I don't have a very high expectation that it would get passed, but I, I think it's a necessary discussion, and it, it's necessary, I think, for the future of the town to, to really look at this. It's coming. You, Norfolk's got a lot of development pressure.
Yeah.
What, what, what we really require and have, not only this issue, but many others, is more attendance at town meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's what we really need, because there are so few people who come to town meeting. You know, if you get two hundred, you're really lucky. Most of these issues are decided on a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five votes.
And they're recruited, they're recruited to come to vote on these.
Well, I didn't say that.
Well, I mean, it's true. But you guys are both talking, you're all talking about needing to have a discussion, and yet, and yet you, you said there, you've, you've spoken to the person who, who, you know, brought forward the last zoning changes, and there is no discussion to have. That's what I heard you say.
He's
So what, what's this? What do we, what's this for?
I think the discussion, I think the discussion has to happen with the rest of the residents too. I think that the town needs to have a discussion about this. That's where I'm coming from, and, you know
But there's nothing that he, there's nothing that he can offer to, to make it, there's nothing that, there's nothing that we, there's nothing that, that somebody who wants to develop town center can offer, his, the group of people that he represents, there's nothing that he can offer them, there's
I'm not saying that, no, of course not.
There is no, there's no way to, no way to bring the groups together?
I'm certain there are some issues that we can, we can come together on, but
Yeah, I don't think he represents a group, I think it was just a
He had a pretty long email list.
He had a lot of people that were the same mindset as he was in that project. I, I don't think that he has a following per se, and I've talked to Peter a few times, and I, he's, he's open to a lot, he just has to have things explained to him, he's a very methodical fellow, but the basic concept that he does not agree with, I respect him forward, he does not think that bodies downtown that live there will walk, will help support businesses. There's, there's a thought process that say that people that live within walking distance of the center of town will support the businesses. Peter, he said that at his town meeting also, he doesn't believe that. He doesn't believe that bodies near center of town will promote business, so as a result, he doesn't want any more density in that area.
It's just a question of degree. I mean, I'm quite certain that the more people here, there will be some people that will walk into town.
Definitely, yeah, exactly.
It's a question of what, what that looks like
So the, the argument isn't that, you know, they will come because those people are going to walk downtown, the argument is they will come because we have increased density. It really doesn't matter who comes downtown of the ten, twelve thousand people we have in town, it's the fact that there is increased density.
Yeah.
That's what the developers want to see, to bring the businesses, so
He flues against, he flues against conceptually that when someone goes to start a business, they look at the traffic flow around it and the market, and the number of bodies. Before someone opens up, that's the dynamics they look at. Peter just doesn't happen to agree with that for our particular town. That's all.
Is, to get to your question of strategy, and I think what you, I thought what you were saying is we want to reach as many people as we can.
Yep.
We want it to be a positive kind of Yeah, I mean, that certainly, certainly a town, a public hearing at the planning board before it's submitted is a better place to affect change
I apologize for the timing issue, and reason being is because things just seem to happen. I was waiting for the applicant to come in and bring materials in to have a discussion. There was word on the street, he's coming, he's coming, he's coming, he's coming, and we just kept getting tighter and tighter. After I did meet with him, I had a conversation, when I did meet with him, I did have a conversation about, would you be open to this? I didn't have anything written. And after that was when I started to put some ideas together and try to fast-track this and move this forward. So it really was, it was more of a timing issue with, you know, meeting with this one person, trying to make sure that we could maybe time our, his application and possibly a new bylaw to allow a separate track for that application that could, I think, be beneficial to the town.
So lot, uphill battle, big discussion needed.
More, more recruiting for town meeting.
More recruiting for town meeting, so zoning happens in the fall.
Typically.
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 This might be a good year for it. This might be a good year for it.
I mean, the other thing that I would add is that.
This one is coming up on the, on the spring one.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it might be a good one for the fall.
Yeah.
It's a little bit rushed.
I mean, Ray, in terms of the model, you know, this comes from a town, if it's in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, whatever the case might be. But, you know, people have a tough time visualizing what the word on the page really means with some of that zoning. So I don't know if there's, you know, plans that conform to that or if there's photographs of like developments that conform with that in terms of the proposed zoning.
Rivers Edge is close.
But, so, so people can relate to that. But, you know, I think it would be a good idea to, in detail, to distinguish what's different about River's Edge from what's being proposed, so that the discussion can be as unbiased as possible, and really come across as being objective. Because I think, you know, folks have a, you know, a very jaundiced view when it comes to zoning and changing zoning. And that's not a bad thing. But it just is a, it's a higher hurdle to, you know, to overcome. And that's, that's the point. So visualization is sometimes important to get people.
Speaking of visualization, recall that the selectmen put together a video that described what the potential development of the downtown area might look like.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Have you seen it?
Oh, yeah, it's pretty slick.
It's consistent with what you're talking about.
Although it didn't seem to help at town meeting, right? Because it was played at town meeting through our minds.
I wanted him to see it.
Yeah, I've seen it. That's a big buck video, too.
That was, it was free.
I know, but it, to produce that would cost you a lot of money.
You know, there's a time for everything, you know, and people, you know, people change their opinions as, as the world changes.
Yeah, I think this is something that's going to work.
In terms of our fiscal situation.
People are going to have to get accustomed to this, build up. What people mainly have to understand, they have to understand the dynamics of 40B. Because we have three right now. And 96% of them get passed. And when this project that Peter got initially at 106, 108 Main, when he comes and when he says that he's looking at this warrant as an acceptable way, which would give us more control, he's coming with his 40B approval already in hand. He's, almost has that now. And the scary part that Peter Diamond is starting to realize with our zoning bylaw study committee with the Southwood project and that is this applicant on that Main Street parcel could make this 80 units, assuming that the drainage worked and there's no stopping. And one of the last things that Tom Houston was here in a conversation, because he's testified in X number, 30, 40 cases. He's lost 97% of the time. They just, if somebody goes through and has a setup to do this like these folks do, they have like seven of them going on at the same time, they go through. So this is just, if people understand that, this is an opportunity to have some say and control on the project, which helps out the developer, because he has no profit limits, he has no 25% affordable requirement. So you can, you can fine tune the project a little bit more to your liking. Other than that, they can do what they want. So that's all it is.
John, we have, we have the 106, 108, we have the Boy Scout property. What's the third one?
Southwood. Well, actually, DePlacido's, yes.
That's why I think the strategy of how the story is told, you know, and this less than a middle ground that we're aiming for and the pros and the cons and the potential risks if this isn't done, you know, very carefully crafted in a way to try and educate folks. You know, I think that's one of our roles here on this board, is we try to educate the public, but there's also an obligation for us to listen to their concerns and their desires. And I struggle with this all the time, because as a professional, I feel like we have great precedent to draw upon for good planning models and good community models. But you can't shove that down someone's throat. You gotta win them over and so.
It's gonna evolve. This big, when I read this thing, I thought that this could be modified and resubmitted a number of times before when it gets passed. I mean, people just have to get educated and locked into the idea that this could be a way to control your growth rather than control. That's all.
It's all about smart growth. It's all about smart growth.
To just point on the visual aid of what this density looks like in real life. If Rivers Edge works, that's great. But your point earlier that the state, the state's transit development, transit-oriented development and then transit-oriented development light, there are examples of those, too. And there might be some right around here, like the Westwood Station might be one of them. So if you have, you have pictures of ones that people recognize and say, yes, this is, this is what they're asking for and this is, and this is what we're proposing, because we think it's more to our scale. It might, I think a lot of people do think visually, I think that will help them along.
And give them real life examples they can relate to, for sure.
Working on that.
All right, so.
I think Barelli was the other 40B, was ended up being a friendly 40B. It wasn't DePlacido, John, right? It wasn't a friendly.
I can't figure out who DePlacido is.
What's that?
The one that's coming from Holbrook Street. The one we haven't got yet.
Oh, well, I hadn't heard about that.
Holbrook Street?
I'm sorry, Lawrence Street.
Lawrence.
Lawrence, oh.
Oh, the old golf.
Lawrence used to be before. The one Lawrence.
So we've had some previous meetings.
The units have gone from 100 to 150 to 300.
Is that Cranberry Meadows?
No, that's across the street.
Swan Pond? Former Swan Pond subdivision?
Former Swan Pond subdivision?
Former golf course.
Okay.
Yeah, former golf course.
I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of a little unnerving that the Boy Scout land that was a 15-lot subdivision way back when, the first plans I saw, it was going to be a regular 40B with 27 units.
27.
Top of the development. That jumped to what, 50-something overnight?
It's 56.
Overnight.
It's in zoning board of appeals, no?
Not yet.
No, they're finishing up their state permit. It's a big company from Boston. And at a whim.
Zoning board of appeals before it went to the state?
No.
They get their eligibility letter first. But at a whim, this is just doubled. At a whim, it could go to 75 if they decide the dynamics, because they're staying right away from the stream and the back, we're not touching it. So this is what you have to understand. If you don't have a mechanism to have people get in, then they could pretty much go unencumbered and put as much density as they want. And they, someone developing would, as I said, would want to come, because their profit's not limited to 20% over three-year project. It's not a great return. And they don't have the 25% affordable factor of, you know, they go through a local bylaw or zoning article. But if there's nothing here, then they will take the way and just maximize what they can. And they're doing this all without sewage, too.
So are we saying this will be a public hearing at our next meeting?
Yes. All the warrant articles have to be heard at the next meeting, so.
Only zoning?
Yes, what the, any zoning.
We haven't seen any zoning. Are we seeing zoning for the first time on?
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing?
Yes.
No, 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 no. It's really embarrassing to read reading it at the public hearing.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
You gotta send this to all of us before the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's going to come to you, but the first public hearing is going to be soon. We have to do it because of the.
The timetable.
But it will be, it will be sent around ahead of time to be read.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm not going to give it to you that night.
Well, no, that's happened. Don't, you know, it's, we've lived that.
Yeah, no.
That's why we have a planner now.
That would not happen.
It just did.
It did not, no, it hasn't happened yet.
No, it's been submitted to, it's been submitted to the warrant and it's been accepted to the warrant and we have not seen it. So it has happened.
Yeah, but not, but not before the public, we'll get it before at least the public hearing to review it and understand it.
All right. So Peter, you're sitting back there patiently. Is there something that you wanted to talk to us about?
Actually, it's in reference to what you just discussed.
Oh, oh, okay. Did you have anything to add to it?
First of all, I just thought, because I've been bugging Ray for a month on it and I know it's been working transition on the actual article that he's been working towards. And I think it's been great.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you want to grab the mic?
Yeah, sure. Before we get. My wife has gotten used to me not being here on home on meeting night, so I have nowhere else to go.
Anyways, you know, Ray has been working on a lot of different zoning things. And when I got wind of it not too long ago, that they were working on what you just discussed, I had great interest, because we've been doing a substantial amount of pre-development work on the shy of three acres across from the post office. And to be honest with you, because of different soil considerations and things like that, despite the fact that you gave me a warm reception on the three buildings that we could show, splitting them up into three lots and having the necessary border health regulations, separations, things like that, and the 150% rule, we got kind of stymied. I really would have liked to have gone with a, you know, a regular type of development here. That being the case, when Ray started talking about this, it made sense. And to be honest with you, given the fact that there's a lack of rental community around here and we have the MBTA running through it, we started leaning towards a 36-unit apartment building. Obviously, it, there's no regulation that allows it locally, so it would have to be under a 40B. Not an ideal situation for you or for me. I would prefer to go elsewhere. When I got the first draft of Ray's, after bugging him constantly, because he's working on it, and I appreciate that, I looked at it, gave my comments back, stopped by Bob Bulgs, and then Ray sent me the updated one. And to be honest with you, under this scenario, I could probably do a similar development to what Ralph Costello did at Old Medfield Square on Route 27 in Medfield, okay, with anywhere from 13 or 14 units on a standalone basis, fully prescribing to what Ray is building into the proposed reg. And I would much rather do that than a controlled construction, you know, three-story building. So just to chime in on what you're discussing, you know what? Talk about scale, talk about this, that. You're right, I don't know who said it, but the growth is coming. The rates are still low and that's when things get built. There's nowhere else to go, guys. Keep pushing past North Fork? It's already built. Just, that's the only reason why I'm here.
Well, bring your friends to town meeting.
56 voted against me last time.
They weren't your friends.
Today, we can laugh about it.
Well, thank you very much, Peter. Nice to you.
Steve, you look good.
Oh, thanks. So I think we're done, or does anyone else have anything else that they want to do?
Just on this annual meeting thing.
Oh, the annual meeting schedule?
That's proposed, as we set up an annual meeting schedule. I think that's a great idea. She proposed the intervals of a month. What does the group think about that? Is that, is that okay? Or as John suggested, whispered in my ear, you know, if it's, if it's too infrequent and we need to, we can throw one in between.
That's, that's right. That's why I feel is a good way to deal with it.
How about the rest? I don't know if I like that whispering in your ear on.
You didn't call it pillow talk.
But we'll just leave it the way it is for the time being, right?
Yeah, my only hesitation is it's a little bit dangerous to commit to something so far in advance, because just things come up with personal schedule, with work schedule, and I'd.
Well, these aren't set in stone. These are just proposed. This is a proposed schedule.
We could just set the May meeting or the one after April 14th, just because I have a public hearing to schedule for.
The May 19th is what they're looking for.
Do you, are, it's, you're saying you don't know that these will be a problem? But it's too far out to know.
Well.
It's generally the second Tuesday, right?
That would be the 12th of May.
That's what, except for May, most of these are the second Tuesday.
It's town meeting week, town meeting on the 12th.
I think it's a good idea, because at least if things are coming up, you know this month's in advance. So you either have time to change it or else we change the meeting, so.
So that's not, it's the third of June, third week in June, third week in May.
If you want to take a vacation, you know.
Second week in July, it's kind of inconsistent. It would be kind of nice to make it a consistent second or third. Right now, it's sometimes the third week, sometimes the second week. So in both May and June, it's the third week, but then starting in July and August, it's the second week. September's the second week, October's the second week. I guess it's just May and June that are outliers.
Yeah.
It may not be a problem, depending on what business we have, but I know I won't be available May 19th. But, you know, if you've got a quorum.
Like we said, we may just move it.
Yeah.
We can always move it.
That's the one she needs.
Yeah, let's.
Oh, that's the one you need.
Yeah, that's for the public hearing on what the earth removal and maybe some other stuff.
I actually have Joffrey and supplied for a sign, a sign for their building. They need a special permit.
Well, what about the May, keeping it at the same timeframe as April and July, putting it on the 12th?
It's town meeting.
Oh, that's right, that's town meeting.
That's why it's the 19th.
Well, are you.
How about the 21st?
I was going to say the same thing. Are you busy for that whole week or is it?
I'm traveling, yeah.
I'm away too.
I mean, yeah.
Well, the 21st, we also have the conflict with Valone presentation.
By the way, I did get the minister.
I'm actually waiting most of the next week as well. I'll leave on the 20th and come back the 27th. So I could do the 19th, but.
Or if you want to do it earlier in the month.
7th? I probably will not be around on the 7th, if all goes well.
Well, we've got everybody here except Jeff on the 19th, right?
Well, no, actually, Michelle's not available.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the when?
The 19th.
I could do the 19th, I don't leave until the 20th. It's going to be tight.
Oh, you can do it.
Well, I'm a little concerned, because it's my last day at work before leaving and that might be a little tight.
It's always a late day.
It's always a late day.
It's when everything breaks. Wheels fall off the bus.
So I mean, I, you know, barring, it might be a little late, but I should be able to make it.
Well, it doesn't matter for me, I can't make it. And Michelle shouldn't make it.
It's my birthday.
What about Thursday to 14th?
I think I've been on here, here on my birthday before.
Yeah, well, you're India. And it's right around the same time, isn't it?
We could go into Wednesday and then I'll. Talking about town meeting on the 12th.
Town meeting is Tuesday and possibly the 3rd, Wednesday as well, right?
Why don't we do it the 19th?
It's fine, it's fine.
Jeff has to miss it, yeah. We're going to do it on the 19th.
All right, okay.
Of May.
Watch the tape.
Yeah. It's always entertaining.
Make me proud.
When I say, well, Tom's not here.
I can start that again.
Andrew, I thought your idea of a penalty was a good one. I don't think you'll bite for it, but it was a, I wanted to try.
Anything that anyone else has to bring up? Anything, anything?
He wasn't happy.
Do we have a motion to?
We said, and maybe now's a difficult time, you know, with town meetings and other things going on. But we said, at some point, we'd do a working session to talk about how we're going to work with Ray and just try to.
Oh, that's right.
You know, I mean, because we're not accustomed to having somebody in this role and I think our role changes because you're here. Changes for the better, but it changes.
Okay. So we thought that that was going to, that was tough scheduling. But we should have our working session act, rather soon. We don't want to put that off for a really long time. So we're meeting on the 14th, but that's going to be regularly scheduled, hearings. So we could have a working session. Do we want to do it the same week, on the 16th and have a working session on the 16th?
Works for me.
It's sort of tough to do two meetings in the same week.
We could do it the week after. The 21st.
No, raise a wedge.
Oh.
Taking my first vacation.
Oh.
Oh.
Made it through probation, huh?
I did. No, I'm still on probation, actually.
The 28th is good. Yeah, the 28th is okay.
I just keep getting put back on probation. I don't know why.
Six months.
How's the 28th?
Six months and another six months and then, uh, I'm just.
It's been a year. It's been a year?
April 28th, we'll have our working session, okay?
Okay. Works for me.
I'm, I'm assuming that he's, he's going to be around since he's, uh, as I said, I'm going to be on vacation.
I'll be back.
Yeah.
April what?
28th.
And we do our normal meeting time? What?
Regular meeting time, but we're, we're not going to schedule anything else.
And what are we working on?
You guys don't need me, but I've got a board of health meeting that night.
And what are we working on? Sorry, what exactly is our goal for the night?
This is our working session that we.
It would be nice to have Betsy.
Betsy there.
My, my board of health meeting won't be long and it, it may not even happen. So just, just schedule.
You know, if it started later, it'd be good for me too.
Eight?
Is that?
It's okay with me.
He could just take a longer nap while he's waiting.
How about the week of the 20th? How about the week of the 20th?
Raise away.
Oh, raise away. Okay. Okay.
Just scheduling seems to be the worst thing with these.
But, okay, working session to, to again, just.
We got the board of health.
This is all has, has to do with how we all deal with each other and how priorities are set and everything else.
It's really a discussion. It's not like.
Like roles and responsibilities kind of thing?
Yeah, kind of.
No, it's not about minutes. You didn't mean that it was about minutes to have Betsy here, right?
No, speaking of minutes.
No. No, to participate in the meeting.
I thought, Betsy, are these minutes to be approved?
Pretty important.
Oh, absolutely. She's got tribal knowledge too.
Well, do you want to ma-, make a motion to accept them if you've already read them?
Are we doing 7:30 or is it?
Motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2015.
All those in favor?
Just one point of discussion.
Aye.
I think it says here.
Aye.
We're voting on minutes.
Thanks, Chair. Guys got my back here.
Sorry.
No, it just said that, um, that I had suggested a through road, so that I didn't suggest a through road. I didn't want the through road concept, so just cross that out. But otherwise, the minutes look fine.
As amended?
All right. Anything else?
I think the working session should mainly be tailored around us getting out by 9:30.
We were trying. We were trying. We're close. We're not an hour over yet. Are we done? Does somebody have a motion to adjourn?
What if Betsy can't make the 28th?
Well.
She said she'd make it even.
Even if she's at the board of health?
Yeah, she said she.
Yeah, I think the board of health would be a little early, but I think it's a 7th, so I might be a little late.
We're going to start at 8.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Starting at 8.
Yeah, we're starting at 8.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks.
We all set? Somebody made a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Jinx.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.